...convinced that executive close session according to sections five five one point oh one of Texas Department of Commerce, which is final action five essential five oh to be required in the opinion of West County District Court in any matter considered such close or quickly meeting or session. Then the final session viable to be either in the open meeting covered by an notice upon the recommissioned public meeting or a subsequent meeting that we're to go to Commissioner's Court upon notice thereof as the county shall determine. So with that, I'm going to call this special meeting. Your order, Madam Chief, if you have any new statements or queries?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Preise one, accent. Commissioner Preise two.
Present.
Commissioner Preise three.
Present.
Commissioner Preise four.
Present.
I will tell you that.
Present.
You should have one.
Thank you. Uh, we go to line item number three, and that is discussion to authorize purchase of emergency communication system includes dispatch control portable radio and mobile radio with maintenance agreement from Motorola solutions through H G A C by Ford, uh, the Willis County Sheriff's Office and Willis County Law and Portion to be paid from capital funds action required. Uh, Commissioners, as you recall, we tabled these line items having to do more with the procurement process than anything else. We did not get into the details to how we would consider paying this. So, uh, I think it went through legal, you know, so yeah.
Yes, Judge, um, although I was waiting to see the invoice, I haven't seen the newest one yet, but I imagine it's probably going to be pretty close to or similar to what had already previously been another, you're going to need one as well. Uh, so I think that that was.
That's probably true.
I have another question.
Yeah.
Uh, so, and so Judge, we did meet with the folks from H G A C by, it was a very good, thorough explanation on, on how it's used, how, uh, the process that we have to go, go by to use their buy program. Uh, so, uh, we were able to, at least for the, on the legal side, a lot of it had to do with just getting copies of the contracts. I was able to, to go through those, uh, even before, uh, the, the meeting that we had with the representative from, from H G A C, uh, reviewed the contracts, were members, we've actually been members since nineteen ninety-eight, Judge, uh, and so they still have, uh, Judge Simons, former Judge Simon Salinas is the original signatory. So I let them know that we would be, uh, updating the information because the old address is still across the street as the county judges.
Village Board.
Yes, so I, I told them it was at least four county judges ago, I want to say five county judges ago, but, uh, uh, so it, for, for the legal part of it, the, uh, the only thing I was waiting on was the, the invoice, just to see that part because the prior, not the invoice, the quote, the prior quotes had expired, and so I just needed to know like what the, what the, uh, you know, just to make sure it was an updated one.
Well, uh, Commissioners, in the interest of time, I knew, I know we had discuss, discussions pertaining to, uh, the figures, the costs, and if you look on page, uh, one of two, um, there's the, uh, the, it says total transaction value of one hundred twenty-seven thousand seven eighty seventy-four, so two things have, uh, transpired differently here. Uh, one is that, and I'll come back to these figures, is that I was approached yesterday, uh, uh, by the sheriff's department, by the sheriff's office about, uh, that, uh, we had missed, or you had missed, uh, one component of the upgrade of the radios, and that was this, uh, equipment that records, uh, emergency calls. You want to explain that?
Sure, so what, what it was, like, again, we had been going back and forth with Motorola trying to bring the prices down, uh, the quote that we got from Motorola didn't include, uh, what was called the data logger, which that's what's used to record all the, the frequencies, I guess, that, that's in use by the sheriff's office, and also, uh, record all the phone, uh, lines coming into the sheriff's office. Uh, that was part of the first original quote from Motorola, but that, that price was a little too high, so we had been going back and forth, we had to cut that, and we went with the third party, uh, which was a lot cheaper, but, uh, I, when I, when I gave them the, the quotes, that wasn't introduced, so, uh, I, I called them and let them know of my error, and hopefully you guys would consider, uh, going with that third-party vendor.
But, Judge.
Mm-hmm.
Go with the third-party vendor, we, we're talking about, you know, the radios that we're going to, to finance part, right? This, we're not going to finance.
Correct. They, they don't have a program.
And so, so what I'm saying is, okay, so, we're going to put a big chunk down, does that mean that we're going to reduce the, the amount that we're going to put down and get the difference and pay that from the down payment, or are we going to pay the big down payment and then go find another forty thousand more?
Well, what, what I had, uh, in a conversation we had yesterday, what I had, uh, told Mr. Rivera to do, to, in order for us to have options, right, was, I told him, and that's why I stopped on the, on the figures, is I said, do, do one, get with the vendor and do, uh, one that would put us providing three hundred and ten thousand instead of three fifty, and see where that takes us, right? Uh, and so if you look at, at that page, I don't think we have that.
I gave you, uh, there's two hundred notes that look like this, they're the, it's in there, I had to look for it. What, what happened to the two hundred thousand?
No, well, we, we had said, we, we had given ourselves option and, 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 correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we got far enough last time, we, we didn't take a hold or anything like that, uh, but I think we were leaning towards, before the, uh, procurement, uh, issue came up, we were considering the three fifty.
I, I never thought that, I was leaning towards the two hundred.
The two hundred instead of, uh, and financing the rest.
For two years.
Okay.
Someone else looking at it.
And, and, and we can do that, we, we, we can play with the figure, but I, I, uh, I'm, I took the liberty of telling them to, to do this, it wasn't Mr. Rivera, I said, okay, we'll do this, or let's see, uh, what that'll do, but going back to what you're bringing up, it's really across, you heard it from the, uh, representative at Motorola that, you know, they, they, and, and I'm not opposing that either, I think two years.
So these new quotes, and I'm sorry, there's a, this part of the discussion page or not, this is including the, 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 uh, what, what we missed?
No, that, no, but if we do that, and then we still have the three fifty on hand, right? So, so if we give the three oh nine, which is basically three ten, and then there's an invoice or not invoice, a proposal here of what you're bringing up.
That, that's for the, the component, yes.
Yeah.
And, and, and I want to be honest with you, it's a, it's a very, I mean, we got to have this component.
Mm-hmm. It's like, yeah.
So, so.
Before that.
So, so I'm going to understand that, that, what you got here from Motorola, the quote here does not include what VistaCom has included in it?
Right, so th- this is the original quote, they just put it all together.
Right.
So they listed, um, at the very last page, you can see, they listed, uh, their logger, uh, as an option to buy, uh, at the cost of one thirty-one, two fifty with complete integration, and that would be a whole, uh, you know, turnkey system financed through, however we're going to finance it, through Motorola and the other Ford. And the other one is, uh, the other option would be the, the final price of the radios of five twenty-seven, seven eighty, seventy-four, you add the forty thousand and five dollars for the, the third, from the, for the logger from the third-party vendor, uh, and that would, uh, that, that would complete the, everything that we need.
Why is there such a big difference? I mean, are we getting the accurate information as to, I mean, cause I know you're talking about one thing is forty thousand, but the other one is a hundred and what?
One thirty-five.
Hundred thirty-eight.
One twenty-five, and then the system, uh, integration is six twenty, sixty, sixty-two fifty, so it's a hundred twenty-five thousand.
That's not even.
That's what I'm concerned about, is that if we go and spend the forty thousand dollars on the system, and then we come back and say, well, you know what, it's not compatible, or it's, we couldn't use it, so we're going to have to spend the other, you know, so are we sure we have the right?
Yes, we've been in contact and communication with VistaCom, uh, they've already spoken with, uh, V T X, our phone providers, they're, they're, they're on the same page as far as being able to integrate the technology, uh, they're going to be using the same, uh, system that we're, that, that we're purchasing from Motorola, they have that, the ability to, to, uh, to record that data as well, so.
Same job.
Same, same thing.
It does though, so this one, uh, the VistaCom does have a annual maintenance contract, so it would be a recurring six thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars. So, and, and Judge, just so you know, um, I didn't know about the VistaCom, the, you know, potentially entering into a contract with them or to purchase this, so unfortunately, the only, uh, agenda item that we have today is to, to consider the Motorola. If you all were to consider the, the VistaCom, it would have, it would be to enter into this contract with Motorola without taking the option, and then, um, for the next agenda, I could, if that's something you all are considering, then we could put this one on the agenda for, for the next meeting, because this, this is, this is part of the conversation that I, I did not know about.
Right, and, and the, the other question I have for Mr. Rivera, and I think he answered it, was whether or not this company is also in that.
Well, because it's less than forty thousand, Judge, we don't have to, we're not concerned, or less than fifty thousand, excuse me, uh, the state procurement laws don't kick in, so, uh, it can be a straight-up purchase.
I think you answered it.
It is, yes.
It is, which, that, I'm relieved of that, because even if we don't have to.
We don't need this for this.
Or whatever, it's telling me that the forty thousand has been negotiated, I guess, for like a better.
And, and these guys, uh, I guess they're all, well, I guess it wouldn't matter if they're on buy board or not, you know.
Well, no, that comes.
No, likely are.
It's a good, it's a good negotiated price.
Exactly.
I like.
Yeah, I think we did that.
That's what I'm getting.
You know, we might have been better breaking down.
And, and, but getting back to, so we brought up Commissioner, um, and we can go back to the two hundred, or even if we were to consider the three ten, we can still select, uh, one year, two years, or three years.
Right, right, I think.
Whatever.
So also that, say we do go with Vista, VistaCom, we, we need to realize that during budget times, we need to figure out that yearly.
Yes, at the six thousand, or what is it?
Six thousand eight hundred.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, to make sure that we put that in our budget.
Absolutely. You're right about that.
Hey, Commissioner, I, I want to say, so there's already, I think, a line item for communication expenses within the sheriff's budget, some type of communication expenses, so it would just be a matter of making sure that.
Right.
Any of this is included in that as well.
And, well, and that's another thing is that, you know, I mean, we talk about, about budget, but is that going to be coming out of the sheriff's budget, or is that going to be coming out of the general fund?
The, the, the six thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Well, it, it's not due, well, help me out here, that six thousand eight hundred is not due to that, a year from now.
Correct, uh, it's already included in the, in the first year, is included, uh, but that's just, it's going to be one, uh, year of service, so after the first, after the first, same thing with the, with the console, uh, service.
First year is coming after.
What's the recurring on, uh, for the console, yeah, she's going to need to know, where's that one? It says, for me, I don't know where it is on here, so, uh, is that something that needs to be, like, Commissioner, mentioned, if it's a recurring, that during budget time you need to keep that in the portion?
My, my, excuse me.
I'm having my administrative assistant bring me that other, just, just so we can look at it. Uh, I feel like, uh, maybe other things come up, you know, I don't know how much, you know, they're now paying. I don't know how much that already comes in, but this already came up, already got there to forty thousand.
Are you sure, are you talking about like the original quote, or?
Yes, ma'am.
I do have some of that, I don't know which one you're referring to.
It's going to be the one that, uh, it's going to be the option with, uh, down payment of two hundred thousand option, well, I would have been going to have option two, I guess, I don't know if that's.
To answer your question about the extended care for the, the console, it's going to be five thousand twenty-five additional per year.
Is that, yeah.
For the fir-, the first year we purchased, oh, yeah, it's included, and then each additional, each additional year you have to purchase, and that I recommend that we get at least for the console, so we can keep, you know, the updates and stuff like that for the, for the system.
Go get it, right, go get it.
Yes.
Right. Did you say there was two consoles, backup?
Two stations, yeah.
Two stations?
Yeah.
I would love to see this go through to P S A.
Sure.
Can you show me the page exactly?
It was on the original.
Oh, okay.
It's a really curveball, it's just, I did it now, but I mean, it's, it just combined all three, the, that separator, with the console, mobile, mobile and portion.
Right. Yeah, this is the one that I have searched.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, it's going to be, I think it has an expiration period, all that, I just, I think we're purchasing some of the equipment that I purchased, sometimes you don't have to put that into it after, it's some rainy day happens.
Yeah, I know, I can do it. Yeah, it goes from twenty-two, five to thirty-eight, so.
And I was also looking at how self-sustainable.
Yes, ma'am.
So, the, 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 you get it?
Yes.
So our console now came in when we built the sheriff's department.
Correct.
Not sure when it came in, uh, I think it was purchased right around when all the radios were purchased, and that was around two thousand ten, eleven, around that, that era.
Fifteen years ago.
Yes.
And it's down?
Yeah, not existent, no. It's gone, so we don't, right now, we're not recording, uh, any channels coming in, and, uh, we don't have a capability of recording on a phone, yeah, it's just a jail post.
It's time, it's time for an upgrade, and let's see how important it is. Very important. Think considering going to.
I am on a, on the.
On the dumping, the option that says, uh.
On the option of the dumping?
Yeah.
This one.
Yeah. Two hundred, two years, two hundred, two years, um, give the S O the time to generate the home.
Well, then, also, you could also, I mean, that's a difference, one thing of the hundred thousand, uh, minus the forty, right, we're talking about the sixty, that's actually like.
No, no, consider, it'd be, well, I guess it depends, efficiency.
I agree. I'm looking at this one, yeah, I'm looking at this one.
No, I know, but, it, it, because initially we were entertaining three fifty, and now today we're entertaining.
Three ten, right, so, so I'm going up with three ten.
Okay.
I'm going up with the three ten mark.
Yes, sir.
So if we do the, the three ten mark, uh, so that, that's, that's basically forty, hundred and ten left over to kind of make, make the payments, and then also pay the six thousand dollars, six thousand dollars, and it would be, it comes out of the fund, but we haven't until they're able to sustain it.
Correct.
Yeah.
Do you, do you have a question?
It's just a suggestion.
Yeah.
And that makes.
Also gives us a mark.
So.
We didn't.
So, us getting all the details done, and getting everything voted on, and let's say it's a goal, how, how, how much time are we looking at on?
How about around three, no, three months.
Three months?
For all the installs and.
Will they try to get the console in for quick?
That's good.
That's fine, we, this, I don't think three months.
And, and just to be clear, you know, I, I know you mentioned because it's not over fifty, but, well, I guess that leaves it out, in other words, you already confirmed, he confirmed that it is in the.
Buy board.
In the buy board, so, so it shouldn't be any problems, because I'm saying, because if we do approve it, then we are going to be, in time of the essence to get the forty thousand dollar equipment, so that everything can move forward.
I think we're approving the, just the purchase.
Yes, Judge.
Right, no, but what I'm saying, we won't have.
No, we don't have to call, it's a special.
Um, I, well, on the original one that they gave us, or the other one that they gave us, I thought that they had given us their contract with their fiber, but now I don't see it on this one, VistaCom.
I don't think that's part of the H G A C, or, yeah, it's got the H G A C by, I just don't see, so all we need is on the, the quote information, we would just need their contract, um, which is, it, it says something here, so it may be that one, right? But, uh, Judge, we would, Judge, we could just verify that, I, I think, Ms. Malzahn would just, but, again, that would, if you're considering the option without this logger.
Right.
Uh, I, I get console and logger, without the logger, then, uh, we would, then obviously, then this would come back for the next meeting to, to consider this one, or however you all decide, so, uh, that would just be needing to, to verify on, on, on this one.
All right. I need to take a motion.
Judge, and, uh, the only, so I had included a lot of additional, just to give you all the option to decide how to negotiate that, so if you want, if you want, so there's a quote that you have in front of you, um, and so I don't know if, if you're going to look at selecting options.
Yes, sir.
Which options you want to, you know, you're going to be recommending, uh, to select, uh, but you may als-, you may also, uh, include in the motion if somebody's considering it, is to authorize the county judge to negotiate, um, as far as if there's, if you're wanting to, um, increase or reduce, I would say increase would be difficult, because then it's going to be a, an increase, but if you're wanting to reduce, uh, maybe the number of radios, like what's necessary now, I know that you all had talked about, uh, doing it in increments, and like, this year we do twelve radios, next year twelve, or whatever, but, so I don't know if there's anything that's finalized, but if you want to still continue to negotiate that, your motion would have to include, to authorize the county judge to negotiate, uh, the final cost, something along those.
Not to exceed.
Right.
Hundred and twenty-nine.
Right, exactly, and to negotiate like the lease terms, because you're talking about a one, a down payment of, amount that's set in this option, plus you're looking at, uh, option one, two, or three, which is one year, two years, or three years. I thought it was three, five, and seven, but I was off, off on that, so it's one.
Two and three.
Two and three, right.
Okay.
And then it would either be with or without the logger, taking the option, you would, your motion would need to include whether or not you're, um, approving or accepting entering into the, uh, purchase agreement with Motorola for quote number, and I would use a quote number that's listed on here, as twenty-nine, seventy-nine, seven eighteen, and then it would be with or without the option of the logger, however you, however that motion is ready, should be paid out of, whatever funds you decide. That would be the easiest way, instead of having to try to read the whole thing, uh, since that's the quote you're considering anyway, and then it would be with, uh, option one, two, or three.
Okay, Rick.
Uh, Judge, if we entertain motions, I make a motion to authorize the county judge to negotiate the purchase of emergency communication system, which includes data, I'm sorry, dispatch control, portable radios, mobile radios, with the maintenance agreement from Motorola Solutions, to be paid through H G A C by for the Willis County Sheriff's Office, the Willis County Law and Portion to be paid from the capital funding in a amount not to exceed five hundred and twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and eighty point seventy-four, which is the contract, um, at this point, we're going to exercise option two, which is a two-year, uh, lease or, or, or term, at a term of six point one, six one percent interest, and the only thing I did get clarification was on the down payment, what was it, two hundred thousand? Two hundred thousand dollar down payment, uh, this doesn't include the, uh, data logger, which we'll address in another cut.
I have a. I have a motion by Commissioner N F C. And a second by Commissioner P H A, and we're in discussion. All in favor, signature, please, and I.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carried.
I get pressured.
I get ordered.
Line item number four, discussion and authorization to approve request for use of telecommunication by the district attorney's office for a community informal event and a community giveaway sponsored by the Law Office of Ryan Solis on February twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, and another acceptable date to be approved by county judge, or another acceptable date to be approved by county judge, same event.
So Judge, Mr. Solis had wanted to try to have a, a community giveaway to the, to the community of Sebastian, I think, I think it's something that he's trying to, to kind of go to throughout Willis County, he's a native of Willis County, uh, he's done quite a bit for, uh, as far as like, uh, bringing in, uh, different types of cultural type of things to, to Willis County, I think most recently there was a comedy show, uh, that he brought some, he brought into, into Willis County, so it's, um, another part of engaging in the, with the community, and so my office is, is, is partnering with him and sponsor, and actually, we're head, I guess, uh, he's, he's the entertainment part, we're the informational part, and so my office has been looking at, and, uh, trying to have events outside of just Ramonville, to be able to go to the communities, we're a rural community, and so sometimes our people can't come all the way into Ramonville during business hours when they have questions, and so this would be a way that we, as the, uh, county, engage with, uh, the community at their community, and so my office would be participating, I think we're, we're looking at trying to, uh, include, obviously, county judge, commissioners, constable, uh, sheriff's office, uh, county clerk's office, district clerk, it would be the community, the county offices to be able to have, go to the community, so this would be the way we would engage with the community at their backyard, essentially, and with that, of course, Mr. Solis wanted to do a giveaway, so part of the draw to have people come to, obviously, where we're going to be, is to have that, that is, would be, uh, solely, I'm going to say, um, covered expense-wise and everything else. I'm gonna say, um, covered expense-wise and everything else, as far as, we would not be accepting monetary donations. We would essentially be providing just the opportunity for us to be able to bring out the community and then enjoy that. And not unlike the, what is it, the, the, uh, splash days that the sheriff's office was doing. I think, uh, Commissioner, you may have participated in some of the events that they were doing, maybe the, uh, giveaways that they do.
All right.
Yeah, so.
And that will fall, uh, within the allowable events to have, based on the situation we're in with the NIOS.
Yes, Judge, it, it would be a county event, but, uh, uh, since he's wanting to partner with us, it would just be, uh, us being able to, the county not providing the giveaways, but this independent, uh, uh, underwriting all of that. Uh, and, and the, the reason, Judge, just because sometimes, you know how in the past we've, we've decided on days, and then the days don't work?
Right.
Which is why I had asked to have it included, that if the event itself is approved, that the county judge would be able to approve changing the date, should there be like a, um, a conflict. I don't know what it might be.
Yeah, all right.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tejada to approve.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Garcia, any more discussion?
Just real quick, Judge, on that, uh, it is a Saturday, which is a great time to do this. Uh, precinct four, which is myself, will offer up to go open, close, help clean up, and all that stuff.
Uh, and, uh, I, I'm not locked in on the date exactly, but it, it, so it could be a Sunday. I think initially they're making, but it just kind of depends on, on, on availability, again. Thank you.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All in favor, sign if I was saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Line item number five, discussion act to approve the renewal non-commercial political pesticide applicator license for Commissioner E. Garcia, precinct four, set to expire March thirty-first of twenty twenty-five.
That's, uh, for my applicator license, or the non, non-commercial political pesticide applicator license, which I share with, uh, Commissioner Tejada, and, uh, it's, it's a, it's a fee, I believe, seventy-five dollars. And, uh, we need to get that in, we don't want it to expire. I don't even know where to pay for it.
Um, this would be like a training.
Training, training.
It's a trial and train.
To be paid for my training budget.
That's in form of a motion?
That's in form of a motion.
All right, so I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner, they get in, they get that, do they? All in favor, sign if I was saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. My M six requests permission to install underground fiber optics within county precinct four, action required.
Yes, sir, this is the, this is a project by Vexas Fiber. They're doing a combination aerial and board installation on Spence Road from Pauline all the way back to four ninety-one, also on Williams Road from four ninety-one all the way to San Diego, which is at that ten eighteen. I already got approval from, uh, Saravio approval from, uh, AC Engineering.
I think these guys are, are, they're doing a lot of these fiber optics everywhere, no?
Right.
Everywhere.
They're all along the, the Kennedy Roads, Emmera's.
Emmera's, they just, I think they, they were just in Raymondville doing the Gepa States.
Right. And then also, I think they're going all the way to the Housers store. And this one here, they're all gonna be on twenty-six, twenty-nine.
Is this a, just a different form of internet, or?
Uh, I think this project here has to do with the, with the windmills, because they're going to that tower that's on Williams Road, rather than Mesquite, between the eight and ninety-one, that's where they're all going to.
I have a, a, a quick question, uh, because I know that VTX, somebody, there was a, uh, fiber optic cable line or something that was cut last week.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, do these people have anything in there that talks about them, if they do cut a line, or go into a, you know, damage of a water line, or something like that, like is there?
These places.
Any, any provisions in there for, for like these people that are digging?
No, they, but they, they will repair, they do run, because the, the, where they run into them in Sebastian.
Okay.
They're supposed to call the eight one one, the, the.
Yeah, they go eight one one.
Yeah, they'll come out and market, market.
Yeah.
And then they go, my understanding, all, all these guys are born under. So we're not really trashing like the other guys, that's where you really.
Well, it just, I'm just saying, because the county was affected, I think, on Friday afternoon with our phone lines. Uh, because a line was set somewhere, I don't know, I don't know who did what, I'm not throwing fingers or blaming, but I do know.
Yeah, there are several contractors, there's another one doing work for VTX.
Okay.
It's a separate contractor, the one that's over here on Emmera, that's Frontier Communications.
So they're aware that they have to call that number and.
Oh, yeah. They go out there and flag it.
Sure.
Some of them didn't in the past. One other thing I had noticed, uh, Mr. Salinas, is that they, uh, when they're born like that, they create that, that, that residue, that, that mud. I told them not to be dumped here on the, on the county ridges, which is what they normally do. So they'll have to find somewhere to put it. If you see. Move to, right, good.
I have a motion again, Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Tejada, any more discussion? All in favor, sign if I was saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Line number seven, discussion act to approve Robert Salinas, the Willis County Flood Plane Administrator action required. Commissioner, this is one that comes up on occasion, especially having to do with FEMA maps, and, and, and we have disasters of, in particular, flooding, hurricane, whatever. And, uh, we, we looked at the responsibilities and, and what a flood plant, plane administrator actually does, right, or, or is involved in. And in most of these, uh, Robert's already involved with. Uh, historically, we went back, I think, I've been considered, uh, in some documents, as the flood plane, administrator, manager, whatever, Jessica, I know, I don't wanna confuse more the situation. But bottom line is that it makes sense, uh, with what we discovered, to have Robert as the Willis County Flood Plane Administrator, correct?
Yes.
That's where we concluded.
Yes, sir.
It's, uh, come up a couple of times, uh, watershed, uh, watershed studies, uh, FEMA funding, it come up. And it's come up recently with GLO. The only thing that I would, and, and Mr. Salinas and I have talked, that, that sometimes you need to see the, the requesting agency that's requesting us to get any kind of engineering services. Need to make sure that it, 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 you know, comes through either through your office or whatever, because it, it incurs an expense.
Correct.
And not from grant fund, or grant works, or anything like that, so, it's really, I'm, I'm looking at, yes.
No, absolutely, absolutely.
And that's why we're presenting it, Commissioner, um, oh, commissioners and judges, because right now, we're currently working on the flood infrastructure in reference, that's what you're referring to, that's being funded by the GLO for the Miller flood. And that's for the project E two oh three in San Felita, which falls under Commissioner Salinas' jurisdiction, and Commissioner Garcia, the E two oh four for Sebastiana. So, I, that's why we went and included that page one from FEMA, I guess. You know, here, I think it's worth to refer to, defer from community to community. And our community, we have communicated to them in the past that we do not have a full-time in-house engineer. And so what Mr. Salinas has done in the past, as Commissioner has mentioned, he refers back to the wheel that we have of engineers.
Mm-hmm.
In this particular fund, in order for us to continue to move forward with environmentalists, we have to identify, in two thousand seventeen, I included the flood plane ordinance. And maybe this is something, Judge, that you may want to further discuss with Mrs. Malzana another time as well.
Mm-hmm.
So that, um, if there's anything else needed, but we were advised by our environmentalists, uh, that is with grant works, that this is what we need to, um, identify, so that we can be in compliance with federal guidance, state guidance.
Yeah, and I think, uh, Robert has been of, uh, savvy information, what have you, enough to know that, uh, when an engineer is required, because he does that in, for instance, uh, subdivision plots and things of that nature.
Mm-hmm.
So I think he already, uh, has that.
Yes.
Knowledge, and, and realize what he needs to bring to Commissioner's court to approve an engineer doing the work. And you're right, there's a custom law.
And under the administrative part that we reviewed with you, Judge, we did check off what, uh, Mr. Salinas is already, that is part of his, uh, roles and responsibilities, so.
So move to approve, Judge? I have a motion by Commissioner that I must approve.
I want to second Judge, and also say that, uh, we're very lucky to have, uh, Mr. Salinas on board, with all his knowledge.
I certainly agree. And I weigh the signatures, I mean, on, on the flanks, there's none. Let's make sure that it keeps going, I think you're doing a good job. So I have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All in favor, sign if I was saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Uh, can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
No, no, direct it.
I got a motion by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Tejada. All in favor, sign if I was saying aye.
Aye.